Item 4.4. Second. Motion and a second. Please vote. All right. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to our 9:00 AM public hearings at 10:30, at 10:40. First item is only one item today, item 1 Economic Development Agency's public hearing on adoption of resolution for extended services for the county service areas. Anyone here to -- okay, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Walls. My name is Amber Jacobson with the Community Services Division of EDA. This morning's public hearing is for the adoption of the county service area charges for fiscal year 2012, 2013. At the close of the public hearing, I ask the board to approve Resolution Number 2012-136, which adopts the charges for extended services that are provided in the county service areas. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item 9.1? Okay, see no one. I'll close the public hearing and move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to our 9:00 AM Housing Authority meeting. Items 10-1 through 10-3. We do have a speaker on 10-3. Robert Mayby. Thought we had one on 9. Excuse me, 10-1. Let me just double check here. All right, nope. I'll move approval of items 10-1 and 10-2. Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to our 10-3.
Good morning. Robert Mayby speaking. I'd like to ask you, Mr. Cavalloni, have you ever been out and driven on any of the streets, any of the neighborhoods? It staggers my imagination why you would want to be -- have more construction when you have thousands of houses all over the county, probably one of the worst counties in California. Why in the world would you want to be building more, more houses? Why not do something with the houses that's applied on the neighborhoods? On the street that I live in, there's several on there that the lawns are all dead, they don't take care of them. What's your purpose of doing this? Could I ask you what's the total cost of this?
Are you objecting? Are you objecting to this item, Mr. Mayby?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you tell me what the total cost is?
You'll have to talk to EDA.
Pardon?
You'll have to sit down with our Economic Development Agency.
It's in your district? Can you know?
I don't know all the costs of every project. I just -- I don't.
Just give me a rough idea, 10 million, 20 million, 30?
Mr. Mayby, this is a matter that if you have questions of EDA, it would probably be beneficial for you to contact EDA before coming here.
So you don't know either? Okay. Well, anyway, could you tell me why in the world you would be building, have more construction if you've got all these houses all over the county and they're applied on every neighborhood? Why are you building more?
Sir, you feel that way, Mr. Mayby, but there's a need for additional housing, so...
You've got housing all over that's hidden vacant. You've got low-priced housing. The houses, the prices are terrible. They're just hidden vacant.
So what's your point?
The ones on my block hurt me and everybody else. Why don't you do something with those? Why? It doesn't make sense to build more.
I don't think everyone agrees with you.
Well, I think most people would. You don't. Maybe you have something to do with this Cordova Construction Corporation. Maybe it's a friend. Maybe it's a -- I mean, you must have a purpose in building these houses. When you -- and what is the purpose when you have so many that's empty, that's vacant, the lawns all dead?
So what's your point today, Mr. Mayby? What point are you trying to make today?
What the point I'm trying to make is that you don't need to build any more housing because we already have, in the county, we have hundreds of thousands of houses vacant, all-size houses, from very small to medium-sized.
So it's your belief, it's your belief that there is a need to stop construction of any additional housing?
I think so, especially if the county's involved in it and the taxpayers' money. But we don't -- I mean, if you want to buy something, why don't you buy up some of these, put the money, buy up some of these vacant houses?
Great.
And get people that are qualified. Where are you, when are you ever going to find interest like it is now? Anybody that deserves a house can probably buy a house. But why don't you do that? Why don't you put the money in these vacant houses?
Let's just agree to disagree on this, Mr. Mayby.
Well, I'd just like to have you tell me why.
There's a need. There's a need for low-income housing.
How can there be a need when you have so many vacancies?
You don't understand real estate.
And you have so many rentals too.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayby. We can, we can sit here for four seconds left and debate and disagree, but your time's up?
No, I, it isn't just disagreeing. I'd like to know why.
Thank you. Mr. Mayby, you can stay up now. I'm going to move approval of item 10.3 unless there are any other speakers on this item. I didn't, did you put in the card? Will then come forward.
Mr. Cavalloni, I'm, I'm for the building of houses. I've been in touch with your office about the fact that it's needed. And Mr. Mayby and I are just now getting to know each other, but I think maybe...
Very happy for you for that.
I am too, because I think that perhaps if you guys hadn't stolen his land, he wouldn't be so distrustful. And perhaps if his deeds hadn't disappeared, he wouldn't be so distrustful. So because I know that you guys did that, you caused the distrust, okay? And then you get upset because there is such distrust. So you have to look at yourself. You've got to look in the mirror and ask yourself why so many people are distrusting. I just heard a little while ago that you're still doing the no-bid contracts. It seems to me that you and Mr. Booster and Mr. Stone, I love Mr. Ashley, I don't know about Mr. Benoit, but it seems to me that the three of you have been drinking much wine and you're very drunk on your power. And you have been for a long time, and you feel you have the right to be silent to the law. And the relief I'm seeking is for you to make it right and not run for Congress.
Okay, thank you. I will just clarify that Mr. -- thank you, Rebecca.
That was not me.
Thank you.
What are you thinking on?
I, I think it's just good to clarify that Mr. Mayby's issue has been held up in court twice over the last nearly 20 years, and they've ruled in favor of the county. And so I guess the distrust, the distrust could come before the courts too.
I'll ask you the story in Mr. Ashley's report.
Thank you. All right. I'm moving approval of item 10.3.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote. Robert Mayby, you're up now for public comment. I've never asked you, Mr. Cavalloni, but how about coming down and give me a hand?
Be somebody who has a desk.
The item's just a moment, Mr. Mayby.
All right, I'll wait for him.
And Mr. Cavalloni, could you show me your documents and not cut them off so that people can see them?
I'm ready whenever you're ready.
You know the rules, Mr. Mayby. Same as last week and the week before, when you start talking, the green light will come up.
All right. Are you ready? This is in, your own supervisor, Supervisor Ashley made a report on Agenda 330, 412, 2011. And his report was based on public doc records and determined that outside council falsely represented to appellate court that the construction of a new road would provide Robert Mayby unobstructed access to his property. Page two, Supervisor Ashley said, "It is a matter of record that no easement was ever recorded, nor was any written settlement ever offered for loss of access." Supervisor Ashley recommended that $242,628 be paid in compensation. Supervisor Cavalloni, Buster, Stone voted no. As, that was to be expected. As reported in the press enterprise, Bob Buster would sell his vote, and Jeff Stone paid $26,000 in fines for corruption cases to the Attorney General. In one case, the pharmacy board made 20 accusations, including improperly labeled drugs, dishonesty, fraud, deceit, and corruption. You know, Mr. Cavalloni, one of, you're a liar, Supervisor, or Supervisor Ashley, but Supervisor Ashley, unlike you, he documented everything he had last year in that agenda. Document number two, page one, Agenda 10-3, Resolution Number F9550, October 3, 1995, to give four property owners easements for Agningris and Agris over district-owned land. Page two, justification, the county has landlocked the property owners, and these easements will provide new access to the property owners. Page three, easement deed of Robert Mayby signed by John F. Cavalloni. Buster voted yes. Do you still remember anything that you signed, Mr. Cavalloni? I believe two, two meetings ago, you said that deeds were never recorded because there wasn't any escrow. Yet there's a letter from county council, no escrow ever existed. I don't know where, how you get this, this information, or you just make it up as you go along. Document three, a letter dated March 1, 2012, from the clerk of the board stating, "The county recorder has determined that the deeds have never been recorded. On video, June 12, 2012, Supervisor Cavalloni told this board and the public that the deeds were not recorded because the escrow was not closed." Look at what the deed says, Mr. Cavalloni, that you signed this for a valuable consideration. What was a consideration? Mr. -- the county, document four, County Council Letter, June 14, 2012, stating there was no escrow. "Mr. Cavalloni, the fact that you lied shows that you are corrupt and incompetent and not fit to be our congressman. I have a claim against the county. I have until October 4, 2012, to file in federal court under the REICO law. I will name you as a defendant for fraud. A county employee will testify as to the fraud you committed, and I have every intention of having you served in the boardroom. Ask a good lawyer what it is a REICO law."
Thank you, Mr. Mayby.
I don't ask for county council. Give it to yours too, I think.
Thank you. I just want to make it clear.
You're welcome.
If you could put up, ATN, if you could put up that document, that easement. I just want to clarify something for Mr. Mayby and others. When an escrow is opened, documents are prepared, and there are documents that look exactly like that. And those documents mean nothing unless escrow closes and those documents are recorded. Absolutely nothing.
If you, if you read this agenda where you signed it, there was no, there was no conditions on whatsoever. You made a full acknowledgement that they had lied, like Supervisor Ashley showed their report, the county had lied to the appellate court.
You're beating a dead horse, Mr. Mayby.
And do you know that, do you know that an escrow takes more than one party that's more involved? I would have been involved in it, so would three other property owners.
That's the point. Takes two parties and more than one party.
You make this stuff up as you go along, and it doesn't come out very good because you're on video. Before, you used to say that you couldn't remember signing these deeds. Now you remember because it was part of an escrow.
Mr. Mayby?
I don't remember signing.
How about my copy of the escrow papers?
I don't remember signing the deeds. That was 15 years ago.
Your head always makes for you.
Thank you. Go ahead, men of council.
Thank you, Chairman. The deeds were never recorded because the settlement was never consummated. The settlement offer that the county made was rejected, and that is memorialized in a memo to the board dated August 13, 1996. Mr. -- Mr. Mayby has a copy of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, we go through this repetitive exercise every week after week. County Council has made this explanation. You've made your explanations. I think it's redundant to further respond to a case that has been agenicated by the courts. We are not the appellate body, and I think the less we respond, the less we will raise Mr. Mayby's blood pressure and cause him any health issues. We regret that Mr. Mayby had a bad experience. It's unfortunate, but there are court decisions that many of us have probably been involved in that we're not happy about, but that's why we have the courts, and this is where this should go back if there's an issue with the county. And I just don't want to spend any more of our staff time repeating week after week, explaining to latecomers that don't know the whole story about the county's position. It's a waste of public resources. It's a waste of our time. Agreed?
One comment, however. I think it would be useful for the county to prepare a written response in layman's terms about the particular points, two court cases. Don't forget the two Attorney Generals investigations too, one more recently at the behest of a local assembly person. And the prohibition against the gift of public funds. Mr. Mayby comes here week after week trying to bear bait this board by alleging that we're somehow complicit, that there's some animus we have against you, Mr. Mayby, and we have none. And I think the record needs to be clear about that as well.
Your name is Lee, too.
I, I listen to you, Mr. Mayby. It's time for you to, it's time for you to listen. It's time for you to listen, Mr. Mayby. We need to prepare these points to give them out to unsuspecting people who come here and hear your tirades over and over again. Because it paints, it paints this county and the county's good name in a bad light and integrity, the integrity, not only the integrity of this board, but also, also people like retired, retired chief flood control engineer, Mr. Ken Edwards. So for people who are new to this issue, they don't know these facts, and they only hear your side of the story.
Did you go to the [inaudible]?
So, so we've had, just a minute, you don't want to listen, and that's true. We've had two, two court cases independently. We've had two Attorney Generals independent investigations, and we may have had even more that, that point out conclusively, Mr. Mayby, that you are not entitled to a gift of $242,000 and some odd dollars for compensation for any alleged wrong during this county, county performance. You are not entitled to that, and I will never vote for that despite all your false claims and your tirades against us. So I think it would be useful to have a sheet that we can pass out, because if you continue to come here, you're just wasting, you're just wasting the taxpayers, you're just continuing. Well, you don't want to listen, Mr. Mayby. You want to talk over me. That's another reason why I think we need a handout sheet so that we can minimize our interactions with you and minimize these kinds of interchanges. They serve no useful purpose whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Buster. Thank you, Supervisor Stone. No, I don't think anyone wants to belabor this issue every week, but the fact of the matter is, Mr. Mayby comes and repeats himself week after week on the same issue. So with your suggestion, Supervisor Buster, so that we don't have to respond continuously with the same questions and answers every week on this issue, I'm going to take your suggestion to heart, ask council to give a brief overview of the court cases going way back to 1996. And the details is, is, in summary, if you will, so that anyone could understand it, hand it to Mr. Mayby every Tuesday. That's the response you're going to get every Tuesday on this issue, Mr. Mayby, is a written summary. It's going to be the same summary every Tuesday. This board is not going to engage in debate with you on the issue any longer. And anyone else that wants it, such as Mrs. Newham, can have their summary as well, but we'll have it for you at our next board meeting. With that, I did take the public hearings a little out of order, and I apologize that because of the new agenda format. So I want to take up quickly the Flood Control Water Conservation District meeting, items 11-1 through 11-5. I'm moving approval of those items.
Second.
Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Item, the county board of Regio, Parson, Open Space District, items 13-1. This is the county side, 13-1 and 13-2. I'm moving approval of both items.
Second.
Please vote. Motion is unanimous. And item, on the district side, 13-1, 13-2.
So.
Please. Thank you. Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries. All right, now, my apologies. We will go back now into public comment period. Item, by the way, 16-1, which is supposed to be under the new agenda format today at the end of the morning session, was not noticed. It was, in fact, noticed for this afternoon, so we're going to have to come back here at 1:30 for item 16-1. All right, Ms. Newham.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We continued item 16.1 to July 31, 2012.
Oh, thank you. Okay, good. So we'll continue that, item 16-1. We do that in the master motion. Thank you. Ms. Newham?
Okay. I do have concerns about the FEMA report that Mr. Mayby showed me and the FEMA report that states that you guys modified those levees and it compromised them, and there could be some floods. That does concern me, especially since there's houses and schools there. And, you know, and if you guys can give me the answers that are necessary for that, I'd be fine. But then I want to go on to Supervisor Stone, the $25,000 corruption fines that you've had to pay, and you're still here. And I really think that this, I'm afraid of you. When I found out about you being involved in pharmacies and you moved into Temecula and all the military that's out there, and how you guys were all involved in trying to steal March Air Force Base 100% correctly with Arnold Schwarzenegger, and you were over there knocking down buildings without even a plan? And the scariest thing was that all of your glossy slick stuff, when you were given that developer, all the awards in here, stated that all of our medical records were going to be contracted out to a foreign country. And it took the Air Force and the Navy and me and my husband and the Loma Linda VA to stop that. I think that Mr. Stone may very well be, because he was mislabeling bottles when he had to pay those corruption charges. And I, I think that you may be a drug dealer and a sociopath. And I know what sociopaths are because my father's one, and he used forged documents to be the fire chief of Coachella Valley in the early 70s. And Coachella Valley would not prosecute him because he was outed and took off and forged documents to be in other areas to get important jobs because they didn't want the bad publicity. And I can also tell you intimately knowledge that sociopaths love to talk and hear the sound of their own voice because of their own egos. The relief I am seeking is for you to go away.
All right. The next speaker is Gary Grant. Gary is going to be followed by, I don't think Martin and Carol are still here. So Gary Grant followed by...
I'm going to have difficulty following that last...
Excuse me?
I'm going to have difficulty following that last [inaudible]. From the standpoint of this, our governance, I want to enlighten you as to what I feel in the relationship to what we're studying right now about our governance. And if you know that I'm an advocate of democracy, and I'm studying democracy and studying the actions of our governance up to date, EDA is, in my opinion, influencing process against will of the people. Prop 218 appears to be ignored. This is a violation of the law. Where is the oversight? Our organization is studying principles and procedure due to the rights of we, the people, Declaration of Independence. We have the right to elect people. We have the right to remove people. I gather that you understand that, right? If you violate the rights of the people, you're, we have the right to remove you. Our organization is studying the principles and procedure of the rights of we, the people. How do you remove representatives who have violated the people's desires of their lives? So far, we are addressing the requirements of petitioning term limits and have found requirements set up by our government to disqualify hundreds of voters, or illegal voters, as penalty for individuals who signed not knowing that they were not living in the area. So far, we've learned that. That is a hindrance to anybody petitioning in our governance to create something to be put on that would control the issues, one of the issues. This is only one of the issues that we're concerned with. I will serialize these and bring them to you, and you can understand why we, the people, are frustrated that we do not have democracy anymore. Where are the people? A lot of people came from [inaudible], an independent issue. Mr. Mayby, for instance, I've heard his story. So have you. He was landlocked by our agencies of governance. Nobody can argue that, Paul. How would you feel if you had a property that you were developing, and then all of a sudden, somebody took away from you the right to access?
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I know what you're up to. Thank you.
Counsel, there's a couple of things I'd like to point out again, and I don't want to sound repetitious, but first of all, Mr. Cavalloni, you're the chair. I recognize that, and I'm trying to respect that, but when you keep calling me out when I haven't done anything and somebody close to me did it, that's not being a very respectful chair. Okay? Kind of watch that, because really, you've done that more often than not, and I haven't done anything. So if anybody really tries to obey the rules, it's me. And to no avail, because I see the bad guys getting away with everything, like your friend over there at the EDD Smith Senior Center. So here we go on the other subjects. We have La Famosa Market. They went to the city of Yerupa Valley. They wanted to get an approval from the city of Yerupa Valley regarding a liquor license. They were denied that by the city of Yerupa Valley because of a 1,000-foot ordinance. When they came back to the county, they said, "Okay, they're not going to sell any liquor." Next thing you know, within the last three weeks, going on four now, they've been working diligently over there so they can open up their little market on Rubito Boulevard. And no one out of even common decency or courtesy notified the city of Yerupa Valley. This is your sister city. The lack of respect that you are showing them is incomprehensible to me. I know why you're doing it. It's not right to even exclude them, especially on this item 4.4. If anybody wants to Google that up. I see what's going on here, and it's wrong on the most severe level of what you're doing. 32 people got displaced. There's now two other people that their lease is up, and no, they're not even mentioned in the paperwork. So what are we going to do about them? You've got to stop and look at what you're doing. You don't seem to care. And I'm only the messenger on this, but I believe in justice. That's why I'm here. I really do believe in justice. And I didn't come to do battle with you guys necessarily, but hold you accountable for things that I feel are unjust. And that's all I have to say on the issue. I will be addressing it further as it develops, but please consider your sister city with a little bit of dignity and respect. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Denise Enwan-Duarti.
Okay. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I don't know any names personally.
I'm going to ask you to pull the mic as close as you can. There you go.
Better?
Yep.
Okay. Actually, I'm here to address Mr. Stone. I have built a property... I have built a property in Glen Oaks Hills, four on five acres of land. It is a 6,500-square-foot home. It is 90 percent finished. I just had a meeting with Mr. Laura in order to come to some type of an agreement to finish my home and get my occupancy certificate so that I can get a loan to finish it. Mr. Laura is being extremely difficult. He is expecting us to complete things that we no longer have the finances to do. We can accommodate some of the requirements, but we cannot accommodate all of the requirements. He is being very difficult. He is being very belligerent. My husband did get upset, hence the goons sitting over there. I am asking you for help. What would you do if you had a family and you had a home that you could not financially finish, but you could finish to the point where you could get your certificate of occupancy so that you could get a loan to finish it? Now, can you help me?
I'd be delighted to. And if you go up to the fifth floor and talk to Rosa Sparza, we'll get together with my planner, Olivia, and me, and we'll figure out what we can do to help you.
I did speak with, I believe his name was Ron Roberts. And we were going to set up a meeting with you, and then Mr. Laura insisted on having the meeting with us. He is being very difficult, very uncooperative. He wants -- this is a--
That's why you have me as your representative. So when you run into roadblocks in the county, we try to solve problems. So we'd be delighted to sit with you and try to figure out what's going on and try to get you across the finish line the best way we know how.
Okay, so it'd be fifth floor, and her name is Rose?
Rose Sparza.
A last name?
Sparza.
Sparza. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
Okay, we have one more speaker, Paul Jacobs. Unless there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in public comment. Please submit your card.
Good morning, Speaker, or Supervisors. I'm Paul Jacobs from Temecula. I don't have my usual prepared speech. I wasn't planning on speaking today. But considering tomorrow is the Fourth of July and listening to some of the dialogue that's been going on, you know, you guys put up with a lot of abuse. I sit back here and I watch you guys take it. On the other hand, you guys get well compensated for taking that abuse. And the citizens here participating in the democratic process don't get any compensation, although, thanks to Supervisor Stone, we will be getting free parking, I guess, as long as we speak. So I guess you're going to have to hear from me every week I show up. But I'm -- you know, my mom and my dad, they taught me things when I was a kid. And one thing was to respect my elders. And even when I hear things I don't want to say, I try to respond respectfully. And I know Mr. Maybe is a thorn in your side, but he does his research. He does know what he's talking about. And to refer to him as -- there was something about Supervisor Stone. You said you respond when there's an intelligent conversation. To put down constituents, to put down the people, we, the people, of this government as unintelligent is just unprofessional, it's unbecoming of this county. You have the right to be silent. When people say things you don't want to hear, there's always that old saying, "I'm not going to dignify that with a response." The other thing you can do is, if you want to have a discussion, put it on the agenda. That's the way democracy's supposed to work. We, the people, bring things to your attention. And if it's worthy of a discussion, put it on the agenda. That's the way it's supposed to work. So as we celebrate the Fourth of July tomorrow, and we are grateful for all our freedoms and democracy, freedom of speech, decorum goes a long way on both sides of the dais. So thank you, and have a happy Fourth.
Thank you, Paul. You have a happy Fourth as well. Hope all of you take advantage of the Concert for Heroes tonight from the courthouse. All right, there are no further speakers. So with that, we'll adjourn to executive session and--